Well, the CT scan verified that I actually do have a ring.
I can't, I don't have access to what it could be. What do we pay you for? Business of the month or what?
I like looking at my, I don't like looking at my clock. She's walking you. I know, now I have to put all the baby gates up. We should see your skirt upstairs.
A little lax undercover.
Have to keep myself very present when she.
A couple of years from now then you'll have no. Oh, you can file okay at seven o'clock.
First order of the. The United States of America and to the Republic.
Uh, well done. Next we have the consent agenda. The bills and the, uh.
Motion to approve consent agenda. A second.
Are there any additional bills?
There are no additional.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor. I opposed motion carried public comments. I'm going to five minutes. Anything not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will move on. Presentation goes to your party. Hundred year anniversary.
So, it'll be August nineteenth down at the firehouse. Plan at eight AM, five paper on this probably check in the start at seven. And then it'll, uh, five paper who says to the self into the real, you know, power drive and all the period down here. Will have after and so here for that. Welcome back for me, we're gonna start and then take John because it's a valid reaction and just fire out. Uh, the DJ and bands all day. Uh, choir routine nine thirty and ten. Uh, we start program after the parade for our honor to get back. And there'll be activities for kids and they would be down here to prove. And members for today. We wouldn't be asking for an extension to our fee open locker to give us relaxed.
Yeah, we can do. I think that's normally we have to do that. No problem.
Do you have to write things for that?
Sometime before, when we get close, we'll just have the board do that. It's gotta be on the agenda, right? No, it looks like it's gonna be fun.
Looking forward to it.
All right. Thank you very much. Our report on operations by those. The only thing I have to say is, uh, starting today, the normal average temperatures are beginning to rise. From this day on into some, so. We're past, uh. But don't expect winter to be over. All right, so village administration.
All right, uh, well, I've had a month or weeks, which is new work in sports course, uh, learning song there. We align our charter of talents, manager, manager, budget. I mean, they call it a little more important days. They are successfully left payroll, I'm sorry, because we need your left payroll. Um, do our role models from last year are going well. Uh, let's see, a lot of items are with our meeting, the trade DMS town still working well. Things gave to Whitehead and to pass all of the bottom part of our events to make sure that kind of bill was kind of just getting there pretty much. I don't know if it's on the same page there, but it's still in the works compared to that just at the end of the month. And it's like the US meeting with all the colleagues now. Let's see, there's some exciting time to work on that there for the dance and a little bit. Uh, we had quite a lot of people involved in half a week's, but not the super attendance. School history, um, a very awesome guy who wants to be looking forward to collaborating efforts, which is why any of that stuff. Um, we did, uh, we launched our radio campaign, the Monday, Sunday, the fire trial, starting Monday, this past Monday with our. That went very well, a lot of them, we have our first fires provided to be tomorrow. Uh, and we did our first bits and marks this elec. Sorry, putting the board guys, I could do, um, it's kind of business or a lot around. Share that story that one, but Wednesday and a picture of the highest spoken media lights, maybe radio, you know, probably ever. Pretty exciting to see to be cast well as well. Before we do that. Um, we had our department meeting, uh, staff meeting, we talked about a recording structure, like that from the. Uh, so I think what we might be doing is because sometimes between, you know, two meetings, matter which happens between the two weeks. Maybe one of the month, the second meeting of the month is what we're really do our whole force for the department, which seems to make more sense. We give the meet, we do this, uh, like whole month. Um, and at that same time, so maybe I have all of our, I've started to finish that. And the next meeting in February, I'll give you some out, but January is kind of a. And again, it won't be a super big debt. Or it's gonna be one page, you know, how much our debt obviously continues to pay to our. I mean, kind of a good summary of that.
Great. Any questions? Thank you, uh, Village Marshall.
And you have a report and you will answer your question. There are needs for moving in with very higher. We're getting processed dating. There's no budget impact. I'm gonna nearly allocate rearrange hours for all the given table. Just give us one more, one more retile for the doors and some different shit we were trying to. But I think in two thousand and five, we had four. So give us, and we better without. I'll have the year end report for you next month. If there's nothing in there, it's right here to the operation of the. One of the rewards that we got up here. And, uh, we're not, we're just putting very long.
Um, the speed signs that you had purchased, I mean, are you against them putting them up or because of the sound?
As, as I mentioned earlier, I have a little and I know it was small. Kind of, I guess I was moved by the four characters. Uh, but, uh, I'd like to wait until we're all winter, put those up. I hate to put them all down and be damaged. Um, we did a small storm and that was experience. Uh, they got damaged in the winter, so we've been a little more character, but doesn't work. But I meant to take that lesson to just apply here, but, uh, once, uh, we get a little closer spring, uh, we'll get together, it's help, run of the brackets. And I think I can achieve, uh, values and things like that, follow the salt once the brackets. Never do work there. They're, they're down there. They're still in the boxes. They're in the office. They're ready. It's just a matter of reading, but we want to.
I had, uh, one more question on, um, Chief Whiter, he developed a graph of responses. And you had just said since two thousand and five, you doubled your. Your guys all around them. Is there any way before you leave that we could get that just for public safety? So I can look long term, maybe.
Well, on your report, on the report that you get from a meeting, it says how many instances we have.
Yeah.
And the one that, the, the last one you have, that's the total number of incidents for last year. Okay, um, so that I do keep track of that basically on a monthly basis. Let's know how many instances we, we have. There are different types of instances. Um, and those are reported. I don't think you've been here for a year, three years before. And remember.
Not for your own.
So I'll write that down for you in, in February, giving an idea of what type of instance we had, what type of patient we were, what kind of rest we've done. Um, sort of a one page and shot.
Yeah, there's about ten, twelve page report, I guess, with all the.
Yeah.
Information that we could talk to if you wanted to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, a good thorough report. That should be what you're asking.
Yep.
Um, any other questions?
Any additional equipment needed for your new officer?
We will purchase some additional equipment, uh, some new ones to do here. I might want to, you know, you know, draw that, uh, yeah, it'll be a little bit of money to hire a new officer. But it's not as perfect. We, we need to last. Now, we're getting up, we're already that, actually, again, it's on already that, the radio, we can do these passes. We already got. Remember, chief.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, for you, for your.
So Brian, then you were the reporter. Uh, I, I don't have anything to add, uh, towards what we're looking for. So how can I be able to be as a D, uh? Sorry. I apologize. And, uh, Melissa, you can get a, I think since this is the board, we can still get that checked out by the end of the month. And it looks easy to have a check by the end of the month, so they can process it. For, so, um, if you're. This. Um, just a quick jump to the file. That's last year's, uh, twenty one minute, get another thirty members. State managing four hundred and twenty dollars and fifty four cents. And you managed that with a total check of twelve thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. This year, in, uh, jumping up to the town now, the, uh, state is upped the match to four hundred and fifty dollars and fifteen cents. Uh, we do have thirty one members eligible. There are three new members, uh, from last year, so that's nice to see. That would make it a total kind of huge, let me jump back. I apologize for leaving garbage back. I realize it's pretty ridiculous. Well, probably a lot of. So this year's contribution, the four hundred and fifty dollars per number, thirty one numbers, would involve thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty four dollars. Just a couple of comments on that. We, we had, uh, things have changed with the accounts at the building. Uh, we're, we're still trying to find for the server accounts. I, as of last year, I believe the amount was around eleven thousand. One hundred and forty dollars, but it's my understanding that someone just taken out of that for the. Probably, uh, you know, this, um, study that was done. We're on it, but, uh, so there shouldn't still be a reserve somewhere. But we're, we're still with that company. So ignore all any issues, you know, the reserve and still that we are kind of. With the thirty one members, I guess, we can be at three new members. Um, twenty one of the members. That are getting, that have developed, that have huge, that have fifteen plus years of investing. Uh, what reason that's important is that fifteen years investing, they go to ninety five percent. Investing. You can't go anywhere to ninety five percent investing until you retire and you're sixty. So. It's, you know, they, they understand, so they get. The way this being change the rule figures back. If you take the one though, before you turn sixty, they are giving you five percent penalty basically early fall. They take five percent on the top.
Do they have a death benefit consideration? That would nullify that? You're not.
Death of whether you're a master. Yeah.
I doubt you. Get the bin.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we gotta. We better go with. That's.
Yeah, cuz that was in right from the start of the program.
Yes, yes, that's, uh, that's a good. The only other. Oh, it's, uh, all the twenty one members. But if anybody just basically maxed all the levels, members have forty years. The reason that's kind of the vital speed is important is we started this program for years ago. We've got eleven members that have stuck out for twenty years, um, old, best instead, your last twenty years, you can get a hundred percent. Some of these guys are getting older. So maybe not as long forever, but, uh, there are guys that are still in their mid way third that have twenty years. So we, we have to, whether I say every year it's sort of reversing, they get homes out. Uh, and next year is really bringing them into the department, but it seems like. So I, I mean, you appreciate, um, this, you know, let us be part of this. So like I said, I, because it's not in China, I'm not sure even necessarily all lines, um, but if you couldn't, it's unbroken. And they had thirteen thousand nine fifty four fifty five. I didn't, I wish you guys. That's okay, we would, so I would be right next to it, you know. Have this approved at the next meetings that, that's all we need.
So the thirteen nine, that's what the state is contributing?
That is, that is.
Okay, historically, we matched that.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I understand that we had like fourteen something. Is this fourteen nine? So you stick to that budget figure?
That is, yeah, but.
Okay, so. All right. Um, we've.
Historically, we. Proved this.
Right. So there are times where something comes in and it's in a hurry or an emergency or something like that, and we, uh. We do issue a check for that and approve it. It's following me. So that wouldn't be a precedent setting thing. We've done that already, so, um, yeah. So I understand, is there any objection to us, uh, doing that, paying that in advance and then approve it? At the next meeting. I have no objections. Okay, I don't hear any. Then you can, uh. Now be assured, but we will, we will see if we can get that checked out. In a timely fashion and then we will prove it at our next, our next meeting. Okay? All right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, any questions?
Chris, are you staying through the whole meeting?
I can see the meeting.
Well, I'm going on vacation next week. So if we need to get this out, I have to cut it after the meeting tonight and we need to get out tonight.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, it really was an emergency then. All right, um, any questions from the board? Okay, thanks very much.
Hang on, if you wanna leave, I can, it's cut to USB, right?
It, uh, right, the check must be financial and then early, yes, financial and then it has to go to the surplus.
I can get the check.
Get the check, I can come get it now.
There you go. I can cut the check for this amount, put it in the, and then if you just come and pick it up and mail it. And then give me all the supporting documents, so I'll have. Okay, then you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Can you get into the inner office? Okay, yeah, keys for that.
Well, otherwise Brian can get it.
All right, okay, then we will, uh, move on to public works. Director.
Outside of reporting now, we welcome together a lot of the person we have and that is, uh. Formats we'd like to use. Going forward, so.
Did you come up with a, uh, a rough estimate of what that activity for those two days is gonna cost us? Maybe about eight or ten loads of slurry, something like that?
Yeah, it was six load of slurry. Um, I have not got the excavator billion. I got Schmitz and Dershowitz.
Mm-hmm.
I, we have a lot of access to, um, parts we use. The plan. Then count. A map and ball, a big ball that we've got one of them.
Yeah, okay, we can wait till next. Um, then we can, can talk about there are a couple of things they wanna talk already before we get that far anyway, so. All right. Okay, what is your report? Other than this?
Other than that, I would every time from package.
Right, um, did, uh. Do we have any problems with the well on there? Anything? That's still all in?
I'm assuming that's why we did the name is, uh, well, it's coming back on. It's all of the office, so. Lot pressure on the inside.
No, I didn't realize that those, the two wells charge the system. And the system would just up to the tower and then lose it to water up there. I thought there were a line to the.
Apparently one, one at a time, but when Mike got in the work at six and saw the friend was going down and up.
Yeah, it was something wrong.
Being suffered in both well.
Yeah, well, that's, that's really going to put our oldest infrastructure at, at risk. More so than, than it was. All right, well, we'll talk about it. Okay, any questions from the board? All right, thank you much. Uh, for treasure. Reports in the packet.
Reports in the packet, but in addition to that, I got those W two's, which. Was pretty good.
Good work.
Had some issues, thanks to Chris with payroll, but we got those resolved and payroll done. Um, what else was I really happy about today that I got done this morning? I don't.
You'll remember when you get in the.
I will remember when I go through the door, but, uh. Just keep, keep plugging through. I made some errors during the year. My nine forty ones got those resolved today with the IRS. Spent some time on the phone with them today, but it's, uh, should be resolved and they're all done, so.
That group is pretty good.
Yeah, she was super nice, super, super wonderful to deal with. We are working on. Closing down Lincoln Financial Pension Plan and booting up WRS. Getting our employees all switched over, so. Just always something.
Will that relieve us of paying some fees to an, uh, company here and there? Or do it all just in? We could, what's, where we pay them, like twelve hundred bucks or something like that to monitor that? So that'll.
Yep, their fees are pretty absorbent at Lincoln and, um, yes, we will eliminate those. And I'm working on, um, also working with the state on getting us. Hooked into their income continuation insurance, their deferred comp and their life insurance, which would then eliminate us paying sun life. I'm gonna, sun life, we do, um, short term and long term disability, which our income continuation insurance in the state would cover that. It would replace that and there is no premiums, no fees through the state for that. Um, deferred comp. I. That's gonna be a wash one way or the other, and then, um. What was the other one?
The one for the police department?
No, the, the. Life insurance and, um, life insurance through the state versus life insurance through sun life. I haven't figured out what the fees there are yet, but I'm. Trying to get everything switched over to the state program, A, cuz it's better, B, it's generally cheaper, especially for a group our size. For, to get us in a group plan for six people. It's just not cost effective, so. I am working on that. Hopefully I will have resolutions in February for you to pass, so we can get that all going.
Yeah, I think there is, we, we do an insurance for our marshals, which if they get hurt on our job, we hold them harmless from their losses.
Well, that's where it's come.
And, yeah.
That's what comes come. I mean, that, that's not through the state.
No, that's wages. We, we, we have a special policy. We have to check and see if you can find that, that is. That they, we make them complete for their wages at their other job. Not just our job. We have to have a special insurance for them. So we have to find out, David will probably know what that is, you know? So we have to make sure we, if we can change that to stable for that too. Cuz their workman's comp and everything would be based on their wage that they earned here and whatever.
That might be part of the continued, income continuation insurance.
Well, it could be, but it is, it is a separate policy that we had to take out for that purpose.
I don't.
Dive into that pretty sensibly, make sure we cover it there.
Yeah, no. It's one of the reasons why we're not able to get volunteers. From other departments. Okay, any questions to the clerk? All right, we'll move on to, uh, we'll. I'll hold number G or letter G that's telling supervisors report until, uh. He gets here, uh, fact commission, public hearing. Uh, we held a public hearing for the, uh. The two items on the, uh. On the planet commission, uh, one was the change of zoning from. Uh, for Philip London, Peterson Industries. Is taking the four lots that are along Stony Creek and the strip of land that's to the south of the manufacturing facility. And combining that all into one piece of property. And the zoning for the whole piece, single piece of property will be, uh, M two. So that's changing the four lot zoning and the learning on that strip of land south of the plant. And, uh, the planning commission recommended to the village board that, uh. That the, uh, country with the commission and approves it. And the other one was, uh. What? The other one was, uh, for on the main drag. There's a two lot.
That was actually in November seventh. We just missed it. This wasn't done at the public hearing.
Oh, okay, yeah, this wasn't on the, on the board agenda, but this was approved and recommended that, uh, we do this, contribute them on results.
And what, what are we comparing on?
It's the next, uh, it's the. The two lots on the south side of Freedom Avenue.
Oh, okay.
It's not part of the plan commission minutes because it was actually done November seventh.
Yeah, we don't have to, the last one.
But we failed to get it on the road board agenda, so. Making up a last time.
Yeah, this is a catch up. This was approved and recommended, um, in, under November. Planic Commission, so, um, that's, will be coming up also.
Yes.
And that's, uh, that was it. Any questions on that? All right, um, Park and Recreation.
Yep, so the Park and Rec Committee met, met last night to discuss a couple of different things, um. I guess first and foremost, we are rescheduling the for the Big Red Dog. We, we're supposed to do that movie, uh, this past summer, but it got rained out twice, I think, if not three times. So we decided to do that up at the school, so on February ninth at seven PM, O S D is gonna host us to have that movie in there, the O H S Commons there. Which will be a lot of fun. It'll be free again for anybody that wants to go and the PTR is going to be doing concessions, so they already decided that they would, so it's great.
February ninth at seven?
Correct, PM, yeah, my dad. Uh, we also talked about, um, having a mud run down at Marie's House. We brainstormed that a little bit. We're gonna have more. Information next month when we meet. We have the Park and Rec Director from West Ben. That's gonna come and present on that. They run a really good program, so, uh, we're gonna take a look at that and see what we could do. As far as that goes. Let me discuss a little bit about the disc golf course and the maintenance ongoing down there. Let me discuss a little bit about the disc golf course and the maintenance ongoing down there. Uh, this golf course has been utilized a lot for the last few years. It's getting stronger every single year. We actually made some decent money off of it last year. The tune, I think, of almost seven or eight hundred dollars, I think, ended up coming from the tournament, so that's pretty good. Uh, trying to attract more different events and people down there. We're gonna implement a pay for play system and then also. Hopefully, we will um be able to replace some of the bridges that are down there just to make it safer for all the participants and everyone that goes in place of course. We talked about the fire department one hundred death one hundredth anniversary event. Um, a lot of that, actually, most of it was covered earlier by the fire department, so I'm not gonna go over that again. And then we decide, we talked about the summer parks program um and discussed. That going again as long as we can find the right help and those people that can um. Take responsibility and and help to watch the kids and plan events for them during that, so. We will uh push forward as if we're doing it unless we can't find help, adequate help, and if we can't find adequate help, we are prepared to terminate it. That's all.
All right, any questions advance? Okay, hearing, then we'll move on to discussion and action items. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the property zoning change. From R S two single family for the four lots and the partial. Recommended by the plan.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any questions? I will call a question. All those in favor. All right, of course. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, next we have. Motion to approve lot division. Lot six and lot five of assisted class in Fredonia. Creating four fifteen and four twenty one Fredonia Avenue. With the water and sewers split. That pretty much hits it all. I have a motion. I'll second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on this? I know this is not timely. This is an old from November, but uh. As recommended. Okay, I will call a question. All in favor? All right, of course, name, one name, okay. You don't like that forty two foot knot? No, oh, but, okay. Next, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three. Allowing for three election inspectors at the February twenty first primary. Which we don't expect to be very busy at all.
I did the April fourth is part of it as well.
Oh, for April fourth also?
Yes.
Was it referendum in there? They're looking to put it on April first. On Monday.
Okay, well then let's just change, I mean.
Would you like someone to amend that to just having it for February term?
I still think we would be fine, but if maybe not. We'll just. Let's amend it to just February twenty first.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three A, um with the exception of striking out April fourth, twenty twenty three.
Okay, so then it's without April twenty first.
Yes, just for February.
Okay, um, any questions about that? All right, I will call it. All in favor? All right, of course. Motion carried. So now we have a motion to reconsider. Trustee Haas wanted to reconsider the action that we. Did um last uh at the last meeting. Um, we can reconsider it something at the very next meeting. We have to, if we want to reconsider it, someone has to move. To re bring it to the floor and get second, then it's debatable.
That's that twelve hundred dollars you're talking about.
Yes, the twelve hundred dollars.
What's the timeframe of that?
It was the end of the month, isn't it?
February twenty eighth.
February twenty eighth, yeah. So in order to uh make the motion to do that, you have to vote it on the prevailing side, which means you have to have a no vote. And Bruce and I and Josh were the three that had no votes. Um, I don't wish to make the motion. You wish to make the motion? Okay, so I will hold that in abeyance in case Josh shows up before we're done. You're not gonna be here? All right, well, then we will uh. We will pass that up then. Due to the lack of a motion. Yeah, if either Bruce or I would have made the motion to bring it to the floor. Yeah, Bruce would, it still has to be brought to the floor first before it can be act. In order to bring it to the floor, you have to avoid it on the prevailing side.
Yeah, so that was done by Christie Haas asking me to be on.
Well, he did, that would he'd have to hear and vote. He'd have to be here to make the motion. Or attending. Well, I'm sure I'm right on that. As we have a lot of sticky votes at the county over the last twenty years and. All right, so as chair, I will declare that. Motion unavailable. The first one failed because it didn't get a. A motion or a second, and the second one is unavailable because it wasn't placed on the on the uh table. And if I'm just really wrong, well, we may be able to visit, maybe can visit that next time, but uh. That's how that goes. Um, okay, now we have motion to accept. Motion to approve the village of Fredonia's Hall reservation forms and fees.
This is just for the village hall and the fire department boardroom or community rooms or whatever.
Is this for village hall?
Village, this room?
For this room? Yeah, cuz this room we have the the lions do blood draws and and things of that nature too, so. All right, for those two areas, the firms and fees, any questions on those?
We have a motion.
We have a motion?
But we don't have a second.
Okay, we have a motion, but no second, no second. We have a second. All right. Any questions?
Yeah, this is uh to rent these out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? I will call the board, all those in favor? I oppose. One name, okay, motion carries. Well, we've got one drawn up in here. I don't know if we printed any out.
See me after the meeting. Cuz I'll be back on January thirty.
Yeah, you probably won't have to do any, just to nail the date down is all you really need to do, right? Okay, um. All right, let's call a question.
We already did.
Already did.
Bruce, Bruce was nay everybody.
Getting lost in shuffle here. All right, um, next we have mentioned to approve village of Fredonia Employee Handbook. Yeah, sometimes it is. Okay, I I believe I heard a motion.
We have a motion by girl.
And a second. All right, um, the uh topic is on the on the floor for discussion. Is there any discussion and questions? Any, would you change this to that or why is this here now? Yeah. Is it, you wanna go through, well, here I can hear. The copy that you have. We made some. Some adjustments, I found some things and uh. Chris and I sat down and went through them, was page. Page fifteen. Yeah, much of it is, were words extra virgin. There was a. The benefits that were credible and here we changed that to creditable. I was just grabbing her and benefit.
Are you playing games over there?
I was, okay, it's thirty four vacation thirty four, that's going in Memphis. Yeah, I noticed that we didn't have anything for vacation for years between years twelve and twenty, so we made that adjustment. You went uh. It went just from six to nineteen, so all those years will be the four weeks. And then twenty and twenty plus will be the five. I think that was the last substantial one in there, and then it's. My question, page fifty one, uh Friday payday. Do we, is Friday our payday or is Thursday?
Friday.
Are we just hand them out Thursday and they cash on Friday?
No, it's all direct deposit, so they get their checks on Friday.
Oh, oh, okay. All right, and that's all there. On page sixty one. It's sixty one, the uh. I was. Okay, I was wondering, in the emergency weather. You have uh the weather conditions and the different whatever. And you go to if uh you're unable to make it due to the weather conditions. Which if you're applying snow, that might be kind of hard. Follow department protocols and contacting your supervisor, vacation day or compensatory time. May be used for hours, not worked. Now. That doesn't mean that a. An employee can call up and say, I don't really wanna plow snow tonight. I'll take a flyer. I'll take an on day. I mean, that won't be a problem. Yeah, that won't be a problem for you.
I mean, if they're sick or if they're bond, I mean, you guys can tell me.
Yeah, you would have done this.
With who was being added a public works guy. I don't see why it's not a problem if one of the guys is bond or.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, I've worked a number of years in in union shops. And. At the county, I was on bargaining or whatever. It's amazing how employees can play with the wording in these contracts and stuff like that, so that that raises my uh. So then you don't think that'd be a problem? And the last question I have is, are elected officials to uh. Are we employees with respect to this? There's a couple of stuff in there, you know? Okay. Yeah, we're basically the first seven pages and a few odds and ends throughout the.
Before we approve this, I'm gonna go back to page thirty four. You said. Paid time off is gonna be six to nineteen years. Which would, but in the bottom, we have it broken down. Like in. So it should follow, it should follow the number four plan. You gotta follow this plan here.
So then instead of. Change that six to twelve and have nothing to twenty, we just go six to fourteen and fifteen to twenty. Okay.
Do you want to follow the this this plan? We just need, we just need to add this up here.
Or do you wanna go fourteen to twenty? In the vacation? Instead of twelve to twenty, go fourteen.
You want, you want this to be the same.
We only have four. There's only four different. Quantities of vacation hours. Do we want five quantities of vacation hours? Or do we wanna have the four week go from days from year six to year nineteen?
Well, six to nineteen, that's a lot of years to put in with no increase in no benefit to stick here. So if you go six to. You want to follow this because you want the five. To, you wanna increase your amount of vacation every. Five years, whatever it is you. I mean, to go.
Well, I'm the grandest part of vacation. I never had, I didn't have any vacation my whole life, which is my fault.
Hold that against your employees.
Taking a months off every year is a lot of vacation. I mean, that's.
But but you also. You have also said you have to be in the same standard as other communities when it comes to paramedics. And this is kind of the same standard as other communities that the paramedics will follow, and then why not give that same benefit to the rest of your employees? Why would paramedics be any different than the rest of your employees? You have made that, you've made that statement and you've made that argument. That we have to to attract the paramedics, we have to be the same, so we need to keep and attract our employees. To be here.
Well, I'm just, this is here now and and we have to, we should. Now figure out what we wanna do to work. And now put it down. I voiced my opinion, but I don't always have the majority opinion. So what did, what does that work out to be?
Yeah, but you got six years and you get three weeks vacation, that's when.
The front end of our vacation schedule is is very aggressive. You get like, like you're there six years and you've got four weeks vacation already. That's aggressive.
It's actually three weeks vacation and one week sick. So it's actually three weeks vacation, one week sick time, and your one floating holiday. So rather than having four sick days and three floating holidays, you have, it's P T O, it's not vacation, it's P T O. It's used for sick. It's used for sick vacation and then it will incorporate that one additional floating holiday.
Plus eleven holiday.
Plus your holidays. Yep.
After working someplace for six years, having that much time off is.
No way.
Maybe, maybe I'm old school, maybe it's changed in the last one years or something and. But that, that's a lot of anywhere.
This, this is pretty standard.
Six years and four weeks.
It's three weeks.
That's very, that's.
Plus your PTO, plus your eleven days of vacation.
Three weeks vacation and one week sick.
Yeah.
Which you already, you already offered that four days of sick time plus one floating holiday. So rather than four sick days and one floating holiday, you get PTO. And it rolls, it's not.
And still, it's a four day work week here, it's for crying out loud, I don't know, I don't know, man.
Well, it's ours, we go ours. But three weeks vacation is. That's not out of the ordinary for being at a place six years.
That, that's what this is. And four weeks is not out of the ordinary for.
Like, yeah, like, you know. Thirty-two hours a week. Yeah, I mean, everybody's working thirty-two hours a week, then you give them three weeks vacation, is this, these are hours built. To provide that, right? And based on our two thousand hour, whatever the, uh, you're.
And, and I think what you're asking, Bruce, is. Will the hours accumulated be less with a thirty-two hour week? And I would say yes, instead of a forty. It's not gonna be based on a forty hour work week if you're only working thirty-two. You know, like for me, I'm supposedly gonna work thirty-two hours someday. Then my accumulation will have to. What's the word I'm looking for? Prorated. To that thirty-two hour week. So I'm not gonna get a forty hours week vacation if I only work thirty-two hours, I'm gonna get a thirty-two hour week vacation.
Yeah, and if you worked for ten, four days, you would get a forty.
Correct.
And so it's nice to have the vacation and, um, PTO and everything. Broken down into hours because you can make those adjustments for the flex time and things.
But for what it's worth, there's nothing in there controlling the bank dollars, so it's a liability.
I thought you did have a maximum in there, yeah, maximum accrual.
Yeah, this, this takes out the occurrence of somebody building up three hundred hours of stick leave over a. A career and having to pay that out on retirement. That's usually. Unless you've got money sitting someplace, that's usually a hardship for the employer.
This is, this does roll over to them.
It does. But it eliminates the. People saving their time for December in case they get sick and then everybody taking off the last two weeks in December. Cause they have to use their time. It will roll each year so that it's just a constant, you always have time in case you get sick.
Do they have that option to get paid out for that at the end of the year, or are they?
Right now?
No, or with this program.
No, there's no payouts.
Yeah, we, right now we pay twenty-five cents on a dollar and buy a beer.
Sick time, yes.
Yes. Sick time.
Yes.
Okay.
It will eliminate that.
So the bottom one. Has the five different divisions.
Yes.
But that's just. The way we calculate the PTO.
Yes.
It has nothing to do with the years of service.
Yes, it does, I mean, cause it's all based on years of service, how you calculate it is based on your years.
Between, between six and twenty. We can add. Fifteen, go to this formula and still have the twenty days.
No, the, the bigger formula, the higher formula gives you more days. We just need to add this line up here. We just need to make these match up here.
Yeah, but I really don't wanna, I really don't wanna be pinning somebody thirty. Thirty days of time off in a year.
Right.
I, I think that's, I think that's a lot. Brandon's gonna be.
And shouldn't he get that? I mean, think of. Right.
After it's twenty years.
Giving you twenty years of his life and you can't give him a few extra days off.
I think I'm, I'm.
Right.
I'm looking, I think in private sector. I, that's my car, I'm thinking private sector because you don't get that kind of stuff in private sector.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
If you have a union, that's possible. Yeah, well, she's her caller secretary.
Doesn't ma- it's the. Yes, they.
And my wife's been at Walgreens for seventeen years and she gets this.
Well, I'm an old fart, you know, I mean, that, that's my problem.
Old geezer, I think your email is old geezer.
Well, they, they wouldn't accept old farts.
Right, so you're an old geezer. This is kind of the standard.
I mean, I get it, it's. Sounds like a lot of time off, but when you put that much time in service and I think, I mean, personally.
Well, like I said, people nowadays work for their time off.
And if you have a good employee that's gonna stay here. You wanna keep him, you don't want him to go away.
So.
Have to offer him something.
Okay, you're, you're suggesting. That. One to two is a rate, three to five is a rate, six to fourteen. Would be the twenty days and sixty hours. And fifteen to, fifteen to nineteen, would that be?
Fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty.
And then twenty and over.
And then greater than twenty, so in your twenty-first year, you would start getting. Is there objection to having a vote on that? Have someone make that motion and go do a test vote on that, see if it passes. Otherwise, we're stuck in a rut, I, I don't want to, this to last much longer than.
But we do have a motion and a second to approve this whole document.
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, we would, you know, we can amend it. Or we can take this part of it out of the motion and we're gonna just. What would you be more comfortable?
Okay, well, you have to ask the people who made the motion, which is Bill and Rick, do you want to amend the motion or do you want to leave it as it's?
I'm ready to leave it as is.
Rick? They are ready to adopt, document as is.
As it, okay.
I mean, there are some corrections that need to be.
Well, right, with the.
Which will amount to aligning those two.
Correct. Correct. So now you need to call the motion as is.
Okay, I will call the motion that was made originally. All those in favor?
Alright.
All those opposed? Name. Okay. I'm still, what can I say?
That's okay, you can be always.
All right, so that's. Handbook. Motion approved. Those are the comprehensive plan authorizing employee periods. And you're all been, Dr. Rue. Had the periods explained to you by Chris? All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve that schedule.
I'll make a motion.
So I have a motion.
You have a motion, you need a second.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none. I will. Is there any questions? All right, um, all those in favor?
I.
I. And those opposed? One knee. Motion passes.
I thought we decided to do all the employees as one group, since we're, since there's only six of us. I thought that's, I thought that's what we decided.
I would take a noon hour, take a noon hour, order a couple of kids, go in a lunch room and do your presentation.
Our, our main employees, I thought we were doing all together.
So did I clear the motion pass?
Yes.
Okay. All right, correspondence.
Uh, we have one thing, but I just wanna clarify that the wage corrections or the wage adjustments. Are retroactive back to January first. Okay.
All right, any correspondence?
No.
I don't see any, okay, items for future board meetings? I'm sure we'll collect enough to have another meeting, so.
This question for the Lord. Uh, with future expansion of the building altogether. Our storage would be what I know right now would be more. Your public works and fire department is.
Hi. Pretty tight.
Uh, we also do not have storage for us all for. Right now, we have two, five hours. That have salt on it, they want. Roughly remember, they salt sit in there and I'm still.
You use the cold mix bin? Or I suppose, you have a cold mix bin inside, right?
So. I mean, remember, I'm trying to implement less salt use, which actually goes in the law on our inventory. But I mean, we have no storage. And I know the fire department's paying for cover for the survival levels. I mean, not gonna, we won't have a lot of vandalism here. But I mean, we have some fire foot that's sitting outside of these trees. I'm one of the properties we will go to. Change the building.
You were just spent two point seven million dollars to make the fire department big enough to fit everything and now we're running out of space.
That Brian, you guys use Brian once in a while?
Definitely have that, okay. But I mean, it's just small, we ran into this problem with leaves. They were hauling leaves that day and then we did not solve them for ice coming. So, I mean, granted, the problem's not that far, but what are you supposed to do? This would have been all ice, we would have been.
Can't you put it down at the waste treatment plant or can you get in there?
We got equipments that's outside there. And there's nowhere, you know, you put it outside.
Well, we're not gonna sell that, that's a.
It, it's coming, I have no salt storage, I have no, you know, equipments inside. Don't pay it for you guys to vote on it.
All right, that's something for public works. Yes, sir. You don't sit, you don't sit on the county board for twenty years and not learn it. Those guys are, are crazy. If we put it on our four year.
Look at what I saw, it should have been done in the same session. After, should have been done in the same session after the vote was.
Yeah, we could have.
That's a requirement.
That's a choice, you can either do it right after in the same session or the very next session.
If it's, if it's a conference, that's how it's still go.
Um, anyhow, any items for considerations? Yeah, thanks, you need anything, bring, bring it up, you know, cause we have to. All right, so then we are in order to adjourn. All in favor? All right, we're adjourned, thank you. What if there's different things, whatever, what you mean?
So. It's gotta be done in the same, same session or the very next, I'm sorry, very next day. As long as it's part of the same session. Reconsider, this motion must be made within a limited time after the action.